Yeah, quite a few.
It's the same as usual though.
Yeah.
It was nice out. It was nice out. I sat out there. I had a few people just come over.
Oh yeah, they were there. That's the issue. So, it was sixteen.
They probably better hit lines to do them. It's a lot of steps too.
I sat down by the side.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm kind of excited. I think it's, I can't even see what time it is. Five forty-five, we're gonna call the meeting to or. Okay, let's, uh, we're gonna review the, um, do we want to approve the minutes from the last meeting? Do we do that next week, next time? Okay, the agenda is to review Chapter Fifteen Village Center. Todd, take it.
Okay. Well, I've provided a copy, um, well, first of all, before I end this, just briefly, I just want you to know that I've noted a lot of little changes. We have to make different chapters, different sections, um, some information that Beth gave me on the, make sure we have the explanation up to how the store district works on the P V, a few other things. Um, and those, I have them on the list, but it's happening because mine are changing. Um, and then after I get feedback on this chapter, and then we get the rest of the information from Beth, then we will, we'll produce the final draft, uh, fi- I'm sorry, the next draft. I'll be sending on the legal folks. So, I just wanted to give you, give you a, um, well, just let you know that there's other changes that have been noted, and I have a list of them and whatever. And I'll actually provide you with a, a little report that identifies, here's the changes. Okay, relative to the Village Center District, um, Beth sent me some good feedback with some good questions, and I went through this and made some edits, um, and I think it's an approved document. Um, just going through this, and I apologize for the creepy black draft over there. I didn't realize that was on there. Um, under fifteen dash one, um, page, of course, page eighty-seven, um, I've added government offices and related uses and entertainment uses under principal permitted uses. And then, under conditional uses, added, that was a root initially left blank. I think it was just how they said, and I got back to it. And so, those things are condition committed in your R two, your B one, initially permitted in this district. If you go look at that, there are all things, I've, I went through all of the chapters, and the R two kind of picks up, kind of, typical kind of uses, things like schools and, you know.
Churches? Do you want to present any of the churches? Are, um, are there any?
I think churches, I'll go back and double check that.
Yeah.
Well, the question is, do you want churches in the Village Center or not? You might know, some communities don't want churches in storefronts. That's potentially a lot, yeah, I don't know.
Then you think of a lot of space and, yeah.
Lots and lots of parking, lots of parking.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, I think the way it's set up, churches are not promoted.
Churches or any paths of worship.
I would say in those residential districts.
I wouldn't limit it to just churches.
Yeah, I, it's usually places of worship.
Yeah.
I'll double check off. Okay, then on the next page, the, um, front yard setback, um, I've just modified this a little bit, um, to indicate that, the way this is set up, typically in most zoning codes, historically, it's always you have a minimum setback. So, the minimum setback from this point is.
I was gonna answer that same thing.
Um, in this commercial district, we're returning to promote pedestrian activity, trying to promote mixed uses, what you really want is a maximum setback. You want to keep the buildings closer to the street. And in the section further on, it says you have to put the parking in the rear and whatnot. So, the idea is to move the building, keep the buildings, I mean, all the shop, the shopping center is, um, close to the property line. A lot of that's village and property in front of it. So, um, so anyway, and what, what this, what I modified this to say is essentially that, if you have a covered portico, or you have an outdoor patio, um, that you can have the building setback to twenty feet, on the mixed use buildings. So, what this said was that residential building to twenty feet, you know, you need to have a little bit of space in the front. Um, and we could change that, uh.
Are you, hold on, are you assuming that, that, that the Village Center will become a mixed use?
No, I, what I'm saying is, no, I'm not. I'm just, in the.
Because it says residential.
What could be, possibly.
The Village Center, the Village Center District that's being proposed is bigger than the footprint of the, um, shopping center. However, um, when I said, for example, the issue about churches, the question is, do you want churches moving into your shopping center? You know what I'm saying? So, if you redesignate that area as Village Center, do you want churches to go in there? Potentially, that's one of the questions. Uh, sorry.
Question, from what I understand, there are two churches in the proposed Village Center District, right? I mean, the churches, we have Catholic churches and Presbyterian churches, they're in, they're right, they're in here.
They're within the boundary, that's.
Right, right.
So.
Okay, we're gonna have to come up with something to address that.
Churches are, are here, they're already here than here.
Well, you can redefine the Village Center by Farid, go with the Farid Road from the Commons up, right? You can push that boundary to the center of Farid Road or something.
You could. I was thinking of the Village Center as being other than residential. You know, like, everything that's not residential is the Village Center, but, anyway.
Well.
Well, those two are existing, um, and rather grandfathered in because they're there. Um, would that be a provision for not, no further?
Well, uh, well, I have to go back and, let me, what this.
Or, or would we have to define the boundaries?
Well, the area of, let me just take a moment, just look and see what we have listed as the R two or not, conditional uses.
Well, yeah, and, and, um, if you, would a church, a storefront church be better than, than no tenant? I mean, if it, if it was otherwise empty, would that be?
I, I see nothing, problems with that.
Uh, it's, churches are religious places of worship, are conditional use in the R two. So, they remain a conditional use, so.
Okay.
So, they're permitted, they're, they're conditional use.
Are they, so they are in an R two where they are, the two existing churches are?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the trend everywhere is to take churches and make them a conditional, because they actually have a history of being, in cases, bad neighbors.
Well, they generally want traffic.
They generally, the traffic, they have, with schools, they have playgrounds paved to the property line, you know, and those kind of things. And so, you, as a condition, you shoot me a buffer and you're, you're fencing, or you're getting, dealing with parking issues or whatever. So, okay, so we're okay.
Okay.
So, anyway, what this, what the front yard setback says, if you're doing residential, you have to be, have the maximums twenty feet. And, and, I mean, we could rethink that, have both of them the same, um, but.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, Todd, I have a question about the definition of the front yard is to the public right of way, right, and the sidewalk is the public right of way.
Yeah.
So, it's just, it's the distance to the beginning of the sidewalk.
Correct.
So, the, the shopping center is setback about thirteen and a half feet from the sidewalk, and the sidewalk is seven feet. So, the total, the total distance from the storefront to the, the curb is twenty feet, but the setback to the sidewalk is actually thirteen and a half. So, I, I'm not sure, if you're basing this maximum setback of twenty feet on the shopping center, then there, that means is what you would consider.
Well, what this, I think this takes care of it, unless I'm thinking about this completely wrong. But in cases where there are covered porticos, and this is what you have, the shopping center, um, or under a patio, is the maximum setback should be twenty, so it's actually in that range.
Maximum.
It is in the range, but the setback is minus the sidewalk width. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is that the setback is thirteen and a half feet. The distance from the storefront to the curb is twenty feet, but the setback is thirteen.
But this is a maximum, not a better one.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, then you're, then you could have a twenty-seven foot.
If it was twenty-one feet, then you have a problem with a twenty-foot maximum.
Right, because it's too, we're too far back.
We can change the number, I, I'm just.
This is gonna be interesting, because however this shopping center ends up ten years, twenty years, thirty years from now, i- if it's the, um, front edge of the building, isn't it the exact same spot that it is now for all or a portion of the existing structures?
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is definitely gonna come into play as far as the design, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, if you're, if you're building off of what you have, that, that's why I'm raising the issues, and, and Todd and I had a stage about it earlier.
Okay.
So.
Because I'm still of the conviction that there's far more square footage there than the village can support from a retail standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
So, if it does, if the economy, common sense, whatever, doesn't dictate mixed use, and there's less retail space there, um, in the future.
Well, this has more to do with creating a, a urban, um, character.
Right.
For that district.
Right.
And when you have a big setback.
It does, might be self to that.
That's not really urban, that's not, so.
Yep, I'm on board with that.
And you wanna maximize the amount of buildable space, so you would want to keep it built.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's why Todd did use the maximize and the minimum.
And that's, seems very reasonable to me.
Well, the other thing is, you don't want it to be big enough for you to put any vacuous things going on in front yard, that's.
No, nor would you allow it.
Right.
You specify that in the.
Well, that's what the second, that last sentence says.
Right.
So, you can't use it, you can't use it for like, for example, having a McDonald's sitting twenty feet from the, further, and have the driveway that goes around the front of the building to get to the tractor, you know, I've seen a number of those, but.
Well, when you wrote this about if, where there are covered porticos, were you thinking about the twenty-foot distance of the shopping center from the curb?
Well, I was, I wasn't, in my mind, I really wasn't thinking, what is the setback for the shopping center? But I was thinking, the shopping center has a covered portico.
Yeah.
And, and, and the other thing that's a big trend that, you know, in, in the current mixed use area, is having outdoor patios in the front, either for smoking, or for dining, or for whatever it is that's outside. And so, the thought is that you're gonna use, you're gonna create a, a pedestrian space that's used as part, basically, extension of the retail, and, you know, little fences or whatever, you know, and then in that case, you, you need a little, you need a little bit more space. That was kind of the thinking behind, I, quite frankly, I saw the number that you gave me on the shopping center, but I wasn't just like, we just take that number and use it, but.
Well.
But when I saw that it fit within this boundary, I thought, well, it's okay.
Mm-hmm. Well, okay, so is the shopping center a mixed use building as it is, or is it purely commercial?
There's no residential, yeah, just all of them.
Well.
Speaking of which, it's a mixed use, fine.
But we don't have residential there.
Well.
That doesn't make any difference, it's still a mixed use center.
Because I wanna see a separate.
Because you've got offices in there, and you've got the library in there.
Correct.
Vehicle repair.
Yep.
Okay, well, maybe what this needs to say is, maximum front yard for other structures. All right. I'll clarify that.
Okay. And if you wanna emulate the, you know, the, the example that's been set by the shopping center, probably the maximum setback for commercial shall be, um, fifteen, say, rather than twenty.
Well, then the center is, is legal there?
Hmm? No, 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 it's not.
It's thirteen right now, it's.
Yes, like, about thirteen now.
Does everyone agree with that?
Fifteen's just around, I'm sort of.
Thirty, forty, five, four rounds. Okay, um, the, the other thing here, and, and I changed this, and I don't know if it's a big deal or not, but, I changed the minimum side yard. Remember, this is a new district, so, and all the other districts, I used all the existing setbacks. So, creating a new district, um, and I, quite frankly, looking at the shopping center, couldn't figure out if there's a side yard anywhere. You know, because it's.
Yeah.
Uh, well, the thought was, is that if you're gonna, if, if there was a new building constructed, and, um, my thought is that you're gonna have buildings, and this is a minimum, not a maximum, um, that, um, you're gonna wanna use as much of the area as possible for your building. And if you, I would never put below five because of fire code issues. Um, this, quite frankly, you, there's fire ratings and openings and all that kind of stuff, you know. You know, if you, when you get below five feet in a building, folks get really, really concerned. Um, but, I, I didn't really see a reason why it should be ten. Thinking, you know, you're gonna wanna, if there's redevelopment or infill, you're gonna wanna use every space you, every part of the land that probably exists. Um, but anyway, so I, then, um, I changed under fifteen nine, if you could read it, changed the maximum height for the principal building to forty-four feet to match the community building number. Um, I, it's not a round number, and we could go forty or forty-five, I, I just thought, we've been saying.
I think that makes our code distinctive.
And charming.
Forty, forty.
Well.
And preservation friendly.
Well, you know, the, the city of Cincinnati, uh, at one time, their downtown district, uh, was based on the principle that no building would be taller than Karu Tower. Remember that?
Yes, I do, but that's been violated.
Well, it recently went out of the window, but, but that was the, the idea, and the, the vision was that, that it would have a perimetal shape going a cube down from Karu Tower, because that was such an important landmark.
Or, or in someplace like DC where many of the neighborhoods, all the buildings are a certain, I mean, you can't go taller than whatever that number is, I don't know if it's four stories or whatever.
And Philadelphia had the same thing, it shouldn't feel higher than City Hall. But, um, but I, I'm not sure exactly what forty-four feet turns into, whether that's a four-story building, eleven, it's like a ten, nine to ten-foot floor, and then you have structure between, is that right, Jason?
Eight and a half to nine feet, and then you gotta.
You could build a four-story building.
Yeah.
Okay.
But then, but then you get into the problem though, if you, if it's four stories, then you have air handlers on the roof. That might stick up, 'cause you're gonna have air handlers on the roof more likely if you have a structure. Does, does an air handler count as a structure? If it counts as part of the structure, then you might.
No, mechanical equipment is typically not counted.
Just equipment.
It's usually, and, and I have to go back and let me see what we've done here, but usually there's measurements. In some places, it's, um, you know, uh, if, if you have a parapet that sticks up to your feet, you're measuring to the parapet.
Right, 'cause that's a roof line.
Right.
Yep, okay.
But if you had a picture of, uh, gateover or whatever, it's, it's, you typically measure halfway up.
Okay, between the mow is in the highest.
From the, from the ridge line to the gutter line, is usually a half, that's how much the codes measure that height. But I would imagine that if you're gonna really, if you really were gonna max out down a four-story building, um, you're not gonna do a flat roof. I mean, you would do a flat roof, and you probably would, would, um, put parapets, but a good, good example of something that's brand new, that's, I think it's three stories, have you seen those photographs of the new stuff being built in Merrymont? The two-year stuff?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, those are only three stories, but they're, but they, their first, the first level sits above ground. You go up the steps to get on the first level, because they have a partially subgrade big, uh, park garage underneath it, so. So, I, what I'm thinking is, if someone is really, if they were looking to do a mixed use building, or they're really trying to do residential, they would probably do some, a more residential roof line, is all I'm saying. So, so you, you could do three bigger stories instead of four.
If they wanna do something outside zone, go, they come see plan.
Well, it's true.
Exactly, and ask for a variant to present the plan, and then, yeah, go back there.
That's everything.
Okay, uh, fifteen ten, uh, this was, uh, based on input from the committee on this concept of limiting the height and width of buildings, and, uh, and Beth gave me some comments here, and remember that, I, what I did here was I tried to link, um, the maximum size of the footprint, um, and then deal with it. So, ba- basically, we're trying to prevent here, it's a big box. Now, but, in my mind, when I think about Green Hills, the likelihood of someone coming and building Walmart is unlikely.
Yeah.
So, instead, in the big box number then, as you, you know, there's like a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. Um, so, I'm thinking, what is, what would big box look like in Green Hills? And so, I mean, and what I'm saying is, what would be the equivalent, something big, yeah. So, um, I, I, I just, I looked at Johnny's toys, and I, I don't know, so, it, it, fifty thousand is bigger than Johnny's toys. But, so, then you want this number to go down, uh, we can take it down. And just to give you an idea of size, um, the typical Walgreens that they build everywhere, you guys have all been in Walgreens, the ones that built last quarter, I mean, those are fourteen thousand square foot.
Fifty thousand is a big.
Fifty thousand is big.
Yeah, it is.
That's half a Kroger store, basically.
That's.
Kroger would be about a hundred.
Yeah, yeah. So, it may be too big. I, I had a lower number, and I went up, and I'm just like, um, and what this would basically do is prevent to have a really short long building, but it would be, it would be under one roof, it'd be, you know, a single footprint.
The thirty thousand seems awfully big to me for our little village area.
That is, I mean, the Wikipedia definition of big box is fifty thousand.
I was.
Wikipedia reference we wanna use. I think you can get done with that in junior high.
We could cut that way down, and maybe make more options for more business, or.
The truth is, the way you've got this laid out, forty-four foot high building, two and a half times that width is a hundred and ten feet. Fifty thousand square foot building would be four hundred and fifty feet deep.
Yeah.
And, that's, that's maybe a little large.
Excessive.
Okay, so, what would, uh.
I mean, to get it down, you know, from the existing.
Beyond that town court.
So, should be, would we talk to something more like twenty thousand?
Yes.
Twenty-five thousand?
Twenty sounds, is a big.
What, what was the number on, uh?
The shopping center?
No, you sent me the number for Johnny's. I looked at.
Oh, it's like forty-three thousand.
Yeah, but that's the buildings.
No, they, no, the, yeah, right, the front one is thirty, and the back one is eleven.
Yeah.
Remember, what if, but it's still, I mean, the twenty thousand still ends up, since we set the maximum width, it's gonna be a hundred and ten feet, um, if it was forty-four foot, it's still a hundred and eighty, one, a hundred and eighty-foot deep building.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a long way.
It's a big building.
Yeah, but.
And, well.
Could we, well, let's think about the, the Village Center and what could go in places. Um, if, if Johnny's got bulldozed, and they wanted to put Johnny's back, could we put Johnny's back with the, with a smaller, um, square footage? Well, I, I'm not saying that that's the preferred use, but I don't, I don't wanna make this thing so tight that we can't.
Well, we could, couldn't we put, um, like, twenty thousand in there, and if, if there was a good plan, and somebody really wanted to ask to expand on it, we could consider that? I, I'm thinking that the whole center, in my mind, is so much better fitting to smaller scale businesses. I mean, it's, you're still looking at a very large.
I mean, it's right, it's a, it's a, not a g- giantly large building, but it still is a reasonably big building.
I think so.
That holds a lot of small business.
Exactly. I think so.
You're hoping that.
I mean, what, you know, at the Trader Joe's store, what, what size would that be?
Trader Joe's, not big.
Five thousand?
It's not even that big.
I don't think they're anywhere near that big.
They're, yeah, I'd say between ten and fifteen, and barely as big as a Walgreens.
And yet, it's a good size, uh, building, holds a lot. So, that's my thought.
I guess the question I would raise is, would you wanna build Johnny's again? Okay, well, what's going on here is that it's two things. This is telling you, giving you a maximum width related to the height. So, this is not saying you can't build a long building, it just basically means you can't build a long, long building. This, what I've added here is a B, which really requires, I think, consideration as well. And what this basically says, that if you build a building that's longer than a hundred feet length, then you have to find, provide breaks in that facade. So, even if you did, um, a fair, a, a shopping center-like building, um, where you have multiple tenants, this would just require some kind of break in the facade at certain points, just so you don't have kind of, just the monotonous flat front.
There's the break.
I mean, I would argue that.
There's a break.
The original building that you had there, or the problem is that, I, I'm so glad you brought those photos last. I'm still, still thinking about that, how beautiful that center used to be, um, but, I don't know, I mean.
Does the break in the facade being vertical?
No, it should.
An actual space differential, not just from, from the side of the wood sign.
No, no, here's what, I mean, if you're looking at a plan view, what it means is like, after a certain distance, you're gonna do something.
Oh, okay, okay, I got the point, I got it.
Or you're gonna go and come out, or something to.
Differentiate, so it's not one solid like.
I'm just making sure that the break was.
Now, that, now that is, uh, obviously, the shopping center doesn't meet this standard, but.
No.
What this is saying here is that, if you're building a new building, I mean, I guess the question is, I mean, we know the shopping center's there, and we know which buildings are original.
Yes, we do.
And the vast, and, and also know how badly they've been butchered over the years, based on the original plans. But, I guess the question is, would you really wanna emulate what's there in a new building? You know, having the front, the side, just like it is. I mean, what, what this is saying, this is a fairly minor change, it's just to, just break up the front of the facade, so, I don't know. So, but, what, the reason I wanted to mention that, and the reason I added it, is that it's really, the two really are related. These are basically set to control bigger structures. You know, you did a mixed use building, this is not gonna be a problem, because you're gonna have.
You're gonna have breaks.
And things like that, you know, for, I mean, you know, if you look at, uh, look at that big building that Merrymont has, you talked about, there are big windows, there are roof line changes where it comes in just a little bit, you know. It's not a difficult thing, uh, to me, but, you know.
I'm okay with cutting it down to twenty-five.
Thousand?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's still makes for.
And it still keeps everything in excess of that, I don't know, so.
That would accommodate a lot.
It still makes a considerably large building.
Absolutely.
Well, at twenty-five thousand, might need to make rocks for Green Hills.
Yeah.
You know.
Your, your shopping center is eighty-seven thousand square feet.
Mm-hmm.
It's like twenty-two feet high, right, Jason?
Mm-hmm.
And if you went by this rule in A, you could only build a building that was fifty feet wide.
Well, that, yeah, each building, but remember, there is twelve, pointing out twelve structures, right?
Mm-hmm.
Up there, so there are a lot of different buildings up there.
Yeah.
You know, when, uh, the, uh, the, the I G A guy, um, built his, uh, when he built the salad bar in Delian's stuff, he closed off one of the passers between buildings, that, that, that central building had a ramp down one side, and stairs down the other. He closed that off to, to build over top of that. Um, so, maybe that, right there, that's one building, and then, you know, one more than another, and then, one more there.
Well, I, I understand, but it, I mean, it, but it reads as a small building, and the, I, I, the character of Green Hills is very horizontal. Um, you know, most of the housing units, um, the, the shopping center, um, even the community buildings, has horizontal emphasis, and that is typical of, of, um, well, and it creates a modern character, too, you know, strong horizontal line. So, I, I honestly, I'm not convinced that you need A, but I think you need B, or else you need, don't build, don't build buildings that are more than fifty thousand square foot, footprint. But the, but this principle of, of building can't be more than two and a half times the height. But the, but this principle of a building can't be more than two and a half times the height, kills anything that's horizontal.
Well, but here's, but here's the point.
I believe, I mean, what, what's the aspect ratio of the community building? About two to one, maybe, two and a half to one?
I, I, I think where I'm struggling with this is that the, the shopping centers are existing structure. And it can be renovated, it can be improved, and there's nothing in the zoning code that prevents that. It can even be expanded. My, my point is that these regulations are here for something new. And arguably, there's a big section of what we think is a shopping center
You take off the addition.
that isn't original, that, you know, isn't, isn't part of the historic.
Right.
You know, part of the building anyway.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so to say that we can't build something new, I mean, it's already been done. Unfortunately, it's been modified in such a way that it looks like the structure. I mean, what I'm just trying to say is that if you build new buildings, I mean, here's the, here's the bottom line. If you, if you, if you want the future character of other buildings other than the shopping center to emulate the shopping center, that's the question. And if from a historic perspective, to maintain the integrity of the existing building, you have to make other buildings so, ha- have similar scale, then we need to get rid of this. If you.
Well, you want it to complement each other with whatever gets done there. You don't want a big one part looking, you know, like a big tower, and then something else. It has to be compatible and complimentary.
I understand, I mean, but this is saying for, when you build a bigger building, a fairly over twenty-five thousand square feet, this was, this is when it would kick in.
Oh.
I guess what I'm thinking is, is that if someone wanna, if, if someone wanna come onto Johnny's site, for example, on the front, or Parkmont is, and they wanna build something, would we, would you insist that it be low, like the Johnny's building is, or low like, um, two stories or whatever? Actually, from the street, one story, twenty-two feet high, whatever numbers we're looking at, on that site? Or would you want to have, it'll, I don't know, you know what I'm saying?
Right, oh, yeah.
I mean, I can't answer that, but I mean.
What is appropriate at the shopping s- the, when I think of the shopping center, I know Johnny's is part of the whole area,
area.
But what would be appropriate on that specific site might be very different from what is appropriate in, um, at the shopping center existing structures, in my mind. Um, and Johnny's, that building was originally a outer store, I think, wasn't it? And it sits down in a hole, and there's nothing attractive about it, it's a big building, but I, and add it on, and, and it's a big, ugly thing, sitting there down in a hole. I would think anybody coming in to rebuild it, even if they tore it down, would change the elevation totally, uh, depending on what they're doing, but it wouldn't look like the same site today, it would look totally different. Um, and, and in that spot, you have a lot of area, if you wanted to go much taller, I can see where taller could be very appropriate on that spot. It would depend on what you're putting in there.
Well, let me ask you this, um, Beth. If we were, if we were leaning towards this approach, would it make more sense if the number was one and a half, or two, or just a lower number? You know what I'm saying? I mean, the problem is you reach a point where it, it, it probably, you just don't need it at all, if you agree that you're not limiting your structure.
I wondered, what is, what do you really wanna accomplish with this?
Keep the big box out.
You wanna prevent?
Right, isn't it?
And the big box definition is by square foot, and also by proportion. But the, the problem is the, the footprint, not the proportion as much. And, and the other thing you wanna do here is break up the facade, right? So.
Well, I think the thought is that if you tell someone that we have this requirement, that you have a height, uh, that, that's relative to the length, then you're not gonna come in and propose a eighteen-foot-high warehouse, or twenty-foot-high warehouse structure, that, that you're gonna have to have a building that looks, appears that it's two stories.
And you're gonna have to build, if you wanna build it longer, you're gonna have to build separate buildings.
Wow.
Right?
Or differentiate, yes, you would.
You're gonna have to build separate buildings, because that, what's the regulation says? Then even if it's forty feet tall, it can only be a hundred and ten feet wide. And I don't know what the length of the ship run of the shopping center is.
Well, well, actually, it says, um, um, the maximum width shall not be, exceed two and a half times the height of the building.
So if, like I said, if you max out the height.
Right, for a forty-foot. Door building.
Yeah.
And do two and a half times a hundred and ten feet, and with the shopping centers, I don't know how long, you maybe put three of those buildings along their, uh, run up and around.
Yeah.
You know, along the directional line, right?
And I think Johnny's Toys is, is wider than a hundred and ten feet, I think it's like a hundred and fifty by a hundred and seventy, something like that. I measured this.
I, I guess, this is just kind of the, quite frankly, the, um, I guess I'm just reprimanded, because I'm writing regulations for something that in my mind doesn't exist yet.
Sure.
And, and what you're, and what we're saying is, is we can't do this, because this doesn't meet, this building doesn't meet this, and this building doesn't meet this. And from zoning, those buildings are existing structures. We don't have to confine the regulations for what's already there, because it's there, it's grandfathered. You can add and build and do whatever you want, and we're, ask for allowances. What this is saying is that if you're gonna build something new, okay, and so the question is inherently, do you wanna emulate existing buildings? New buildings, sorry, do new buildings need to emulate existing buildings in their mass and in scale? And, and I can't answer that question for you. My personal feeling is that that, that's counter to what your comprehensive plan vision was. So, but if you aren't, if you aren't comfortable with the comprehensive vision plan, now that we're kind of rubber meets the road, fine. The way to solve that is just removing A.
Well, I would, I would just get rid of the two and a half times height. The footprint can't be more than X amount of square feet.
Well, I.
Because then you can go as high, theoretically, you can go as high as forty-three and a half feet.
Well, I'm not.
So just limit the footprint.
Just limit the footprint, because if you, in a perfect world, if you had a medical building, and one, you go in there and had, and had six stories, or what, forty-three foot eleven? And you said, well, it's gotta be this and this and that, and you say, well, I just want a footprint that says fifty thousand square feet. I wanna build fifty thousand square feet, forty-three and, forty-three feet, eleven inches high, want my money or not? What are you gonna say? Well, it can't be two and a half times the width, you know.
With the medical industry right now, I'd say no.
The same.
And you might have, you might attract another business, like the oldest Alzheimer's center.
Right.
I don't know what the footprint of that is, but it's fairly horizontal, isn't it? It's very horizontal.
Well, it's a, it's a school building for nineteen fifty-nine.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's now a middle school.
It was originally a school. No, it didn't. But you've got another school, empty school building on the south side of the green.
The mine, I, you dunk it two and a half times the height, you go with the footprint.
So, but you're saying.
Because you already got your height, you already had your height at forty-four feet.
Just so I understand that, what you're saying is that set a maximum square footage for any building, is that what you're saying? I don't know, wait, do you, is that really what you wanna do? Someone would come in and build a sixty thousand square, square foot structure, you'd say is not permitted? I guess what I'm saying is that what this is trying to do, this is trying to link the volume, the mass, you know, how much it'll take up on space, and then deal with the proportions. And my, what I'm saying is that if you don't really care about the proportions, then I think we're better off just getting rid of A, and then just deal with the vertical changes, horizontal.
If our, if our goal is to make these things, um, horizontally oriented, maybe we make the, sure that the, the aspect ratio is greater than one instead of less than one. Okay, 'cause, you know, sort of, they're looking at the, uh, you know, that area of the community building, and it looks like it's, you know, in, in, in that neighborhood, that two and a half to, to one kind of neighborhood, um, with the addition on, without the addition, you know, it's, it's squareer, it's certainly, you know, horizontally defined, but, you know, I think we want to say, yeah, it's gotta be horizontally defined. You know, that sort of keeps with the, uh, the architectural design scheme that we were, uh, built in. But, you know, tall, skinny things, you know, you know, this is like a bunch of shotgun houses, or townhouses or row houses, that are, you know, twenty-five feet wide, three stories tall. That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for something that's got some substance to it, that goes that high and can go that wide.
Well, I think, I think the way this is written, you would have to do is increase the number. So, it says the maximum width should not exceed the number, so many times the height of the building. Right? So if you had a fifty-foot-wide building. So that would be what?
Almost one to one. Like fifty-foot high means just a little bit over a foot wide, basically, right? Um, yeah, fifty to forty-four.
So, I mean, if you had a, a big box, which say, has a twenty-foot roof line, and this would say, you can't have more than a, whatever, fifty-foot-wide building. So, if you want to create, if you wanna, uh, influence structures to be lower and long.
Well, I mean, that is already, okay?
By the forty-four.
It's got two and a half to one aspect ratio, right? That's what we're saying.
Yeah.
But I think what I'm more concerned about is the ones that kind of like this. You know, we, I don't think we want this tall, skinny thing, we want something greater than one to one. Maybe greater than one and a half with the.
You know, I mean, I think, the, the problem with the box is the, is the total size, and then if you were in, um, in more urban downtown, you wouldn't want horizontal buildings particularly. You wouldn't want, you know, one-story buildings on Fourth Street. But here, it's okay, because that's the character of the village.